Good afternoon. I want to welcome everybody to the briefing meeting, October 22, 2013. Time is 2:10. Let's start this off with change orders. Dr. Atkins, if -- I know all my colleagues got memo. Hopefully, everybody did as I did. Does anybody have any questions on that? I believe Mr. Snell is here to answer any questions that we might have on that. Ms. Fisher, do you have any questions on the change orders?
No.
Ms. Dozier.
I have none.
Ms. Morgan.
None.
Ms. Scott.
None.
And I have none. That's pretty good. Thank you so much, Reggie, for all the hard work you guys do out there. Now, let's move right on to teacher and learning, policy bullying and harassment. Mr. Robert Dodik, Pete Bohatch, and Lori Brooks, welcome.
Thank you.
I don't believe your mic's on.
Okay, now it is. Thank you. We're here today because during the 2013 legislative session, the Florida Legislature passed Senate Bill 626, which included amendments to Florida Statute Section 1,006.147, the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act. The amendments to the law were signed by the governor and became law on July 1 of this year. The amendments to the law pertain to what is commonly known as cyberbullying. The draft proposed changes to the board policy before you include the changes made in the statute and in the law. Also included are changes that were suggested by the Florida Department of Education when they issued their model bullying policy after the amendments to the statute. Dr. Bohatch is here today to answer any questions regarding the implementation and operation of our board policy. And Ms. Brooks is here today to answer any questions regarding training and the bullying programs we currently operate in our schools. Of course, Mr. Martin and myself would be happy to answer any questions regarding the law. Thank you.
Ms. Dozier.
On page 2 of 10, where it says, "Any ownership of any computer, computer system, computer network that is located on school property," I would assume that this is basically for when students use maybe their cell phones for texting, for Facebook, and this type of thing?
Yes, and in fact, in the future, we're going to be bringing you what's called the Bring Your Own Device Policy to the board, which will allow students to bring iPads and other devices. If they're using our network, which they will be using, that's what that provision provides for, that if they're using our network and commit an act of bullying, we would enforce this policy.
Okay, well, and when I -- as I read this, I didn't quite understand what our obligation is, and I'm going to use a hypothetical situation. All right, if we have a student that uses their own personal device, they are not on school property, do we have an obligation to intervene? And what is our liability there? Let's say it doesn't happen at a school event, it doesn't happen on school property, it happens, let's say solely at home. What is our obligation exactly, and what is our liability?
We investigate immediately.
We have an obligation under the law to investigate the report of bullying, even if it was made off -- even if the act allegedly occurred off-campus.
Okay.
Well, what about the second part of her question? Liability, should something have been found?
Well, if something's found, we follow the code of conduct. Let me turn this on. If we can determine that the bullying is causing a disruption to the campus or the normal, you know, the daily operations, we follow the code of conduct.
And that is a broad range of whether or not there's any disruption on campus, because I know, and I'm thinking of a particular incident that occurred at a school, where girls, where students were using their phones to cyberbully another student during the school day because the parent actually had the -- had the
Postings.
Times of the post and all of that. And it was decided that it was not a disruption. Now, this didn't happen after this policy, so this was prior, you know, to this policy, to us approving this policy. And it was decided that there was not any disruption to the school day, and therefore there was no discipline taken. So, in the future, what you're saying is, if this occurs, if a student uses their phone and texts someone during the school day, if they put something on Facebook during the first -- the school day, because we know when all of that occurs, and it's a bullying message, then we have an obligation at that time to do something about it. But you're also saying that even if it's done at home, and it's bullying, that is in relation to a -- to a student having a relationship with another student, then it's still our obligation to not only investigate, but to act.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to caution that, and you said bullying, so I -- part of the confusion sometimes with parents comes in when bullying is repeated and purposeful and intentional and ongoing. And sometimes if there's one text, "You're ugly," or, you know, "I'm going to be mean to you," whatever it is, that's different than true bullying. So, we have an obligation to look at all of them, but this -- correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but this policy would apply to those that really are documented as bullying by definition of bullying and cyberbullying, because there is a legal definition, correct?
Absolutely.
That's correct, which is in the policy, yes.
Yeah, we've dealt with this over the past couple of years. I can remember parents sitting in the front office with their documentation in hand with the postings, and if it's online, we try to teach the kids, it's not going to go away. So, and we've handled it, and it seems to be working. I have some good data to share. First quarter of this year, we have six documented bullying incidents per Cessor. Last year, first quarter, 41 incidents, so an 84% reduction in reported bullying incidents. Something to celebrate at this point.
Anybody else, any more questions, comments?
To what do you attribute that?
Well, multitude of factors, and Lori, jump in. I think our prevention intervention programs.
Education in general.
Yeah, and I think in the past, the confusion between harassment versus bullying, you know, the administration coding it properly, and like Dr. Graham said, one incident is not bullying. We had a couple situations this week where parents came in, filled out a bullying complaint form, and it was a single incident. And it's hard to explain to the emotional parent, you know, that's not bullying, but it is harassment, and we will act on it. But I think the prevention programs and the way we're coding things, it's incredible. I got that data this morning for the first quarter, and wow.
Any more questions, comments?
And our action is what?
Well, first offense for bullying is parent conference, okay, and interventions. So, if we have a referral on bullying, call all parties in, you know, find out what's up, document everything, notify all parents, the target and the alleged bully. And then, second offense, we're real strict here, admin review. Now, admin review could be ALC, suspension, or expulsion. So, and we are very, very strict on bullying here in Lee County. It is second offense, you're sitting in front of the principal. It's a big deal.
And I just want to say thank you, Dr. Bohatch, Ms. Brooks, and to all the people in the schools who are promoting and using the prevention and education programs, and to you for your hard work on changing the code of conduct and adding those interventions, because I think that makes a big difference. So, thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We had some other good news. First quarter reports, ALC numbers down 15% over last year, too, quarter to quarter. So, hopefully, it's working, and we're going to continue to track the data and share that with you.
I just have one comment myself, and that's just basically to mirror what Ms. Fisher said. Thank you for all the hard work you guys have been putting into this. The numbers show, it shows that you've been putting a lot of effort into reducing the bullying, ALC, and keep up the good work. You know, hopefully, next year, you know, we can continue this trend. I do appreciate everything you've been doing, because I look at last year and some of the comments I would get in this year, and I haven't really had any parents call me complaining about this. And it seems to be working, and I want to say thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I would say, probably, and Lori, because she didn't share much about what we've done, I know you have stuff there, we have had to educate the adults, the teachers and the administrators. It's, you know, bullying kind of came out of quickly, and of course, this area, it was very personal, and it got a lot of attention before people really understood what it was about. And so, there, I know there's been a concentrated effort to be sure the adults and the schools are educated as well, and that's helpful, because then they can talk more readily to parents about it and not -- it's real easy when a mom is emotional, like Pete said, to jump in and go, "Yeah, that's bullying," and we really thoughtfully and intentionally have to explain to them. We'll watch it, we don't want it to become bullying, but this is what it is right now, so.
If I may share, our prevention specialist, April Thompson, really hit the ground running last January, not only analyzing evidence-based bully prevention programs, but also putting into place and pending our bully policy updates, a very helpful manual for the administrative teams at each school to help them truly understand the implementation of -- just taking the implementation we've had in place a step further, providing additional resources, and really highlighting for schools some gray areas that we can continue to address. And one of those, too, that April and Pete and I have worked closely on is hooking the school counselor into those interventions and ensuring that that comes back to the school counselor for not only the student exhibiting bullying behavior, or the target or the bystanders, all three of them need to have some replacement behaviors and analyze within themselves the reasons they may be exhibiting the bullying behavior, also ways to improve defensive mechanisms, if you want to call it that, for kids who are targets, how they can exhibit self-assurance and avoid some of that targeting behavior. So, we are going to make sure the schools understand the importance of that wraparound effort. But the Suncoast Schools Federal Credit Union and their funding of April's position really has been a pivotal point in helping us truly address this comprehensively district-wide. So, we thank them for that, and thank you for your support.
It's a great partnership, and that data is going to
Yep.
...be good for them when, because they're looking at whether to renew that commitment. And so, when they see this data, I think they'll see that their investment is yielding some positive results.
Thank you very much.
We'll be bringing this back for a public hearing on the 19th of November.
Mr. Scott, did you have a question?
Pete, I think you said it went from 41 a year ago to 6
Yes, sir. First quarter to first quarter.
Is there a change in the distribution by school?
I don't have that, but I can get that for you, most certainly. That's easy to do. I can call Cindy for you.
I'm just curious as to whether it's elementary, middle, high, where those pockets seem to be continuing to hang out, if there are, you know.
I will forward that to the board.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving right along, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. 2013, 2014 Student Progression Plan, Middle and High School Studies. Ms. Patty Elkin and Ms. Lori Brooks.
Actually, I'm pitch-hitting for Patty Elkin today. She has gone home with not feeling very well. So, luckily, this is an area that I know quite a bit about, and it's very easy for me to pinch-hit. Lori's going to present some of the changes. As you may remember, we've kind of been talking about this Student Progression Plan and this program of studies for a while, and it really stems from some of the changes that came with Senate Bill 1076 that were put into effect on July 1. 144 pages of changes came to us from the legislature, and as we continue to work through some of those changes, get further guidance from the DOE on what some of those changes are going to look like, I anticipate we may have a revision even as we go through this process and this adoption process of the plan as it stands now. I anticipate, as we get more information from the DOE, that we will have an update to the plan sometime in the course of the school year. So, I'm going to pass it over to Lori. She's going to go through some of the major highlights of changes. I'd like to point out that our diploma designations are a place that you're going to want to pay attention.
Thank you, Ms. Coots. One of the first changes we would like to highlight is in the middle grades. In the 2012-13 school year, the requirement for students who were entering middle school as sixth graders to take civics at some point during middle school took effect. And then, starting in the 13-14 school year, there is an end-of-course assessment for civics that will count as 30% of the final annual grade for those middle school students.
I want to say that this is one of those areas that the legislator listened to our local school boards in regard to making this a logical requirement for our students and allowing the civics and of course to be important, but not to be a gatekeeper to moving on to high school. So, this is a celebration.
An additional middle grades change is in regards to the Career Education and Planning Course. That has been a requirement for several years now. However, an Internet-based component requirement has been added, and the Choices Planner, which is already a free Florida Department of Education tool that our schools have been implementing, is the recommended Internet-based component for the middle school. So, it should be a natural and a seamless transition for the middle schools to implement that Internet component. In regards to high school, obviously, we still have standard diploma, and we have two diploma designations, the Scholar designation and the Merit designation available to students. And the next few slides highlight the differences between them. One point that I'd like to make before we move on is that students may choose to qualify actually for both designations. It is possible that they may achieve a Scholar and a Merit designation. And of course, we're going to be encouraging students to pursue designations, and Scholar being the top designation academically speaking that a student may earn. They must pass the Biology EOC, the Algebra II EOC when it's available, their U.S. History and of course Assessment, and then, when implemented, the English Language Arts Grade 11 Common Core Assessment. They also need to earn credit in Algebra II and Statistics or equally rigorous math courses. They need to earn credit in Chemistry and Physics, and two credits in the same foreign language, and then one advanced course credit, either Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, ACE, or Dual Enrollment. The Merit designation is meeting standard diploma requirements plus attaining one or more industry certifications. Economics now will include financial literacy. That has been embedded into the current curriculum already this school year. The teachers have been trained in EverFi, and then there are supplemental resources available through the financial -- through Financial Freedom from Florida Council on Economic Education. Course codes will be implemented in our program of studies next school year, and -- but the financial literacy curriculum is already embedded and underway this year for students. Do you want to add anything? For high school math changes, we still require four credits of math for standard diploma, one of which must be Algebra I or its equivalent, one of which must be geometry or its equivalent, and the passage of the Algebra I end-of-course assessment is required to earn the diploma. So, the Algebra I EOC essentially replaces the FCAP math test as far as the graduation requirement for math testing. There was a removal of the requirement to pass the Biology and Geometry EOCs that not only applies to incoming ninth-grade students, but to all students enrolled in high school after July 1. So, during the summer, our current students who were under the requirement that they must pass Biology or Geometry EOCs in order to earn the credit and graduate, now they all count as 30% of the final grade, and that requirement is the same for all currently enrolled high school students. And this is just an example of one of the graduation charts that the Department of Education released, I believe, September 11. And that concludes our changes. And do you have anything to add? No?
Thank you. Board, Ms. Dozier.
I have a couple of questions. Is the civics class, is it a year-long or is it a semester class for the middle school?
It's a year-long seventh-grade course. It's a year-long seventh-grade course.
Seventh grade, so it will be in the seventh grade, okay? You talked about that Choices Planner. When I read this, I still don't -- after hearing it, is it software or what is it?
It's an online program that schools may access, and each student can create an account, and we usually help facilitate that. So, as part of the curriculum, the teacher would facilitate the creation of the student accounts, and it's through the Department of Education. So, they access the website online, it's through the DOE, and it provides interest and skills assessments. After those assessments, it will hook students into suggested career areas for their strengths and their interests. And then, it also hooks into the Department of Labor Statistics and Employment Statistics and their prediction for different careers over the next five to 10 years.
I believe it also makes suggestions as to where a student can go to get those requirements. So, a kid says, "I want to be a lawyer," and what they really look at first is how much whatever they choose makes. And then, they -- then it will tell them, "Okay, if you want to do that, you could go to these institutions," and it'll actually name places. And it takes them through the whole process, what it would take to get there. It's been around a long time, it's a pretty cool program.
Okay. The only reason that I inquired about it is because I'm going back to where it says that. You're saying it is a software program where they can go and obtain information?
It's a web-based program through the DOE.
But do they have to, like, create anything? Do they have to create maybe a project or to show mastery? Because, I mean, it's obviously a course requirement, so they have to do something to meet that course requirement, I would assume. And I'm trying to get my arms around, what is it that they're going to have to do? You know, going and looking for stuff and finding out that, "Maybe I want to go to school here, go to school there," and, you know, that's fine, but where do they demonstrate mastery of career education and planning?
In their course that they're enrolled in, the online or the web-based program is a place for them to get information and for them to learn about those things. It's not necessarily where they would do that type of project like I think you're describing.
Okay, so it will -- it will act -- it is a physical program, and it's going to have standards, and it's going to have a curriculum with a course guide and so forth?
Not -- correct, and we've been doing that. This is just a new requirement.
Okay. All right, so when we get this, before we approve it, we will get a copy with all of the language in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Let's see if I have anything else. Oh, under high school, where it says, "Financial literacy," I'm always interested in that. What are -- and you say we're going to use EverFi. Well, see, that doesn't tell me anything. And what is described as financial literacy? Because what is financial literacy to me may not be what is financial literacy for a parent. So, what -- what exact -- are we going to have a -- in this, before we approve this, I would like to see exactly what it is that we are putting out there that the students are going to be responsible for, I guess.
Sure, we can bring that back to you and go through the different standards that are incorporated into the financial literacy part and what's taught through the EverFi curriculum. We would be happy to do that for you.
Okay, because we got caught up in this once before, and I believe it was last year, when this came before us, we -- it came without us ever seeing a hard copy. And we pulled it because, I mean, this is a policy, and we need to see what it is we're approving.
Yes. The Senate Bill 1076, this is part of what we're still working on getting information from the DOE in regard to. The Senate bill, like I said, 144 pages, and the requirement of the financial literacy is just one sentence in those 144 pages. And so, working to find what that looks like and what the expectation is are pieces that we are still getting information from the DOE in regard to.
Okay, but, all right, to make it clear, before the program of studies comes to us for us to approve, it would be my hope, Dr. Graham, not my hope, but we need to see a copy of it.
So, you're asking for a hard copy or an electronic?
No, we can have an electronic copy, but we need the verbiage, just like we do for any other policy, because this is a policy that we approve, and parents will know it better than we do.
That's going to have to come before the 5th. If we're going to bring this on the 5th, it'll have to be in memo form. Mr. Martin just reminded me, this is supposed to come on the 5th. So, you will need -- you'll need -- you won't be able to bring it to another meeting, is what I'm saying. You're going to have to get it to them in memo form. And Mrs. Dozier, you're saying electronic, is that good with the rest of the board? So, you want to see the actual content? Yes?
Just out of my own curiosity, could we bring this back in the briefing that day?
Workshop that day.
I think that's a workshop that day.
Ms. Fisher.
Okay, so this is pertaining to the high school course of economics?
Yes, ma'am.
And the EverFi and the Financial Freedom from Florida Council on Economic Education will be incorporated into the curriculum in economics?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it -- is that exclusively those named ones, or is there any room or flexibility for programs like Junior Achievement or other financial literacy programs to be included? Or would that be the choice of the instructor?
Potentially, yes. There's flexibility for those pieces. EverFi is the -- the DOE is recommended.
Yes. Okay, and that's strictly pertaining to the course of economics in high school, which is typically the senior year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
It's a semester-long course in the senior year, traditionally not required to be in the senior year.
Right, thank you.
Okay, the 5th is a briefing, but it is loaded. So, if you want to have more conversation, we probably need to -- are we on a deadline when this has to be passed, the Student Progression Plan?
Not at this point.
So, if we need -- if you want to talk about it more than us giving you the memo, we can pull it from the action on the 5th if we need to do that. You all just need to give me some direction.
I'll
Otherwise, we'll give it to you in memo form.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
How do you feel about it?
Well, I feel that since it pertains just to that one high school course, that if someone could share privately with anyone who needs more information on that, rather than to take the time to have a briefing or a workshop, that would be my recommendation.
Ms. Dozier.
Well, my recommendation would be that this is something that we approve, and I think we need to see the language in it, because there have been situations when we have actually felt the need to maybe assist with the language in some way. And I feel like it is very important that we look at that before we actually vote on it, as has been the practice of us doing that. In fact, that could possibly be why they're bringing it at this time, because I don't believe it was until a much later date that we actually approved the program of studies last year. So, my draw there would be that we see the language in this before -- before I can support it, I would have to see the language.
Would you -- I guess maybe, would you rather see it in the briefing on the 5th, or would you just be happy with?
Well, I could see it at the briefing would be fine. I mean, as long as we -- it's a document that's like a policy. We need to see it to approve it, and just seeing -- this is exactly the way it came last year.
Correct.
And when it came last year, we all were very concerned about the fact that we didn't see it. Well, here it is again, we're not seeing it. And it's just like a policy. We had all the language from the policy, and yet, all the language is not here for us to see.
You have the whole program of studies here.
Okay, I guess I'm not seeing it.
Ms. Morgan.
If you keep scrolling down. Well, my preference is to see it in writing. If there are questions that the board wishes to address at a briefing, that -- at that point, we make the decision to do a briefing. But I would prefer just to see it in paper or, you know, online at this point. And I need And I, I need some, do you, because you've got all the courses and their, the purpose and all of that's right there. If you want to see actual, the financial literacy is the one I heard the most about. Do you, the standards for the course and the content of the course? I need to be clear on what it is you want to see. You want to see content and standards?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Scott? Your feelings on this?
I think this is an interesting box of Cracker Jacks we're opening up.
Maybe you'll get the prize.
Well, I hope we all get the prize.
I hope the students get the prize.
I think that, I don't have any problem in looking at the content of what any of the courses that are being offered is. As a matter of fact, I think that's an obligation we ought to assume a bit more of. Even if it slows things down. That we ought to know, not just titles, not just headlines. We ought to understand the content of what every course is that's being taught in our schools. I'll, I'll take it to that extreme. So I will agree with Mrs. Dozier and Mrs. Morgan that we need to look at this particular thing in a little more detail. But I want to take it further and start digging into the box of Cracker Jacks. Because I think we have that obligation. If not now, when is it ever going to be?
And on, my point is, I will agree with Mrs. Dozier, Mr. Scott, and Mrs. Morgan. I think that, my question is right now, if we just get this into a hard copy and then I have more questions and I'm going to end up pulling it and it's just, I would rather see it actually be brought into the briefing. Even if it's just a short bit that we have questions, I'm fine with that. But we do, we are obligated to look at this very detailed, just questions that I believe that, you know, if we have questions, that they need to be answered right then and there before we bring it to where we have to vote on it.
Okay, then, then.
Ms. Fisher? I'm sorry.
Well, as, as I'm looking down here at the progression plan for high school, middle school, and elementary school, it appears to me that it is quite detailed and includes modifications and new requirements that have been dictated by the state. It gives some specific information about student improvement plan, for instance, and multi-tiered systems of support and levels of intervention. And then goes on to talk about what's expected at each level, what the requirements are for kindergarten and first grade, second and third. So it seems to me like we have this information in this document. And maybe it would behoove us to take a look at it, read through it, and then maybe fashion some questions that we might have for the Teaching and Learning Department that they could then respond to us and explain those pieces of it that, that we're not real familiar with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Ms. Morgan?
Well, further to what Ms. Fisher has said. So where in this document do we have the course description that incorporates what we're talking about here?
That would be under the high school economics course?
Yeah, I'm looking for it. Give me like a page or something.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I can get back to you with that information. I think what I'm hearing is some, the need for some more specifics in terms of the standards or the changes to the economics course that we're being asked by the state to implement the financial literacy piece. And is that the question that I'm hearing?
I also, I also heard standards for every course. So just need some direction.
It's basically, all right. I see that we have this. And I apologize because I did not realize that this was down here at the bottom. Okay? But again, this is a document that we have to approve, just like any other policy. Like the other policy, we had everything that went along with it. And I think one of the things that would help us would be to have an understanding of what the standards are. Have an understanding that, okay, yes, we've put in the civics course, but what, what is exactly the obligation along with that that the student is going to have? Yes, it's going to be one-third of their grade, the end of course exam. Yes, we know that now it's going to be, I think you said, a year-long class and not a semester class, correct?
Part of seventh grade, yes, ma'am.
So what are some of the standards that the student is going to meet? Because, for instance, I get, I was out in public and I was speaking to a civic group. And when I told them that this was one of the things that, you know, that we had embraced and that we were going to put it in place even before the legislatures, legislators mandated it, you know, there was just a, you know, a rise of everybody being very excited about it. But they're going to ask us, well, exactly what do you, exactly what are the expectations in that civics class? Well, if I don't know it, I can't tell them. My answer back then was, we are still working on the course. We are working to get those standards in place so that the standards will be across the district. And all students will have the same expectations from school to school. You know, it's easy to answer, answer a general question. But then when you get down to specifics, this year when I go back and I see that same group of people and I talk about this course, they're going to say, okay, what are the specifics now? So in order for us to have an understanding, I think we need to have that information instead of just the, just the abbreviated version.
So what I'm hearing is the desire to have a briefing on the civics standards as well as the changes to high school economics?
Correct.
Which is on page 114.
Correct.
We can do that.
So we will pull it from November 5th then? Because we aren't going to, the November 5th briefing is?
Slammed.
Slammed. So we may have to just wait.
And as I said, chances were, we were going to have updates and amendments to the plan anyway. So that's certainly acceptable.
And, you know, I don't think there's any rush on it. As Mr. Scott said, you know, sometimes you just need to slow the process down. And that's one of the things that, as board members, we learn all the time, that we need to slow the process down. We're not on a freight train that's out of control. We do have time to do this. Occasionally, there are things that come to us that have got to be done immediately. But that's why you have an emergency situation. This is not an emergency situation. In fact, if my mind serves me well, which it doesn't always, it's, I, I believe that we don't even, in the past, we have been, it has even been as late as the spring before we actually approved this for.
This is actually this current year's student progression plan. I'm not sure what practice has been here in, in years past.
This is for right now?
Yes, ma'am. That's our freight train.
Well.
May I, may I ask one more time? If we, we can pull it from November 5th and have a conversation in December briefing, but we only have one meeting in December. Or we get the standards for those two courses, the standards, the syllabus, all of it to you in writing this week? And then you've got, you've got time between now and the 5th to ask your questions of me or Ms. Coots between now and then? Would that suffice?
Ms. Morgan?
It does for me.
Ms. Dozier?
I want to clarify something. We have already approved the Program of Studies for 1314.
I don't believe so. I believe that you were briefed on it, but I don't believe that it went to a vote.
That's why it's here.
This is another one of those balls that fell through a great big hole, a deep hole?
Just something we found.
Because this should have already been approved.
Well, my goal would be that next year's is approved in the spring. And then what you come back with in the fall are changes based on what happens in the legislation.
Because usually, we do approve it in the spring.
Well, and the reason you all have recollection is because it was briefed.
Correct.
If, if I may interject a little bit. We were ready to go for the 1314 Student Progression Plan and Middle and High School Programs of Studies when Senate Bill 1076 was released and we saw the 144 pages. We had to work for many months to put that in place. However, a lot of it remained undefined by the DOE until late August and then finally September 11th with the release of the graduation charts. This is abnormal that we're this late. Usually, we have this up for final approval by the July School Board Meeting for that very next school year. So this, this is highly unusual. And I think we've been a little driven by the DOE rollout of this because they're also trying to fly the plane as they build it.
I'm just glad to think that Mrs. Dozier thinks I'm six months ahead.
Well, I will tell you, I, I am sitting here quaking. I am absolutely in shock that this is not already approved. Because now I realize that everything that I've said kind of sounds real stupid.
Well, that's okay.
Because, you know, in fact, just the other day, I was looking at something and I didn't look at the date on it. And it had an incorrect date on it that someone had sent me. And I just assumed this was for the upcoming year because I know that we've already had an extensive conversation around the Program of Studies. In fact, I am still just absolutely in shock that we, that we have students in school and we don't have a Program of Studies that is approved, that the students are actually meeting those expectations at this time. And I hear, I've heard that it's 144 pages. We've got to do a better job. In fact, we need to use the services that are available to us. And one of those services is sitting at the very end of this table, Mr. Martin, who can basically tell us what our obligations are. Also, Mr. Sarah and all of them can tell us. And I, I mean, and so we need to get this done. And, and I am just, I'd like to have an understanding of it. And as quickly as I can have that understanding, I'll be fine. But I'm in need of the understanding.
Economics, civics, in writing this week. And then we'll, then if you have any questions between now and the 5th, obviously, we have our regular meetings. And I know Ms. Coots would be available as well.
So let me get, make sure I do understand this myself. We didn't get the information from DOE until July?
We're actually still in the process of getting interpretation to Senate Bill 1076 from, from the DOE. Yes, sir.
With friends like them.
We don't need any.
That's exactly right. And I don't think Mrs. Dozier has asked any dumb questions.
No, she hasn't.
Okay? I, I think it's disgusting and it's part of what we are dealing with every day here. It's no wonder that teachers are going insane, not knowing what they're supposed to teach, how they're supposed to do it, what materials they're supposed to be using. If we can't get it straight from the horse's mouth in Tallahassee, how in the world are we supposed to be implementing these things on a timely basis and a thoughtful basis? It's disgusting to me. And those are the people that are in the way of all of these decisions that we're making here. We're standing still, our feet are tied together, our hands are tied together, along with all these people, waiting on decisions to come from folks who should have done it a long time ago. And it doesn't require the consortium of school boards or a school boards association or any of the rest of it to do it. It takes the Department of Education getting out of the way, doing only what they're required to do when they're required to do it, and giving us the instructions that are necessary. Sorry, but it really irritates me.
And I'm near the same edge as what Mr. Scott just said. And I feel sorry for our teachers, our instruction personnel, Ms. Brooks and all of you up there. Because you have to come to the board and tell us all these things and then tell us, but we're still working on this. And you said it right, they're flying a plane that they're still trying to build. And again, Ms. Dozier, none of the questions you asked were stupid. There's legitimate questions and we need the answers. And how can we expect these teachers to be out there, you know, teaching these students if we haven't actually got the tools to give them yet? It, it's really redundant in so many different levels right now and aggravating. Ms. Fisher?
Well, I just want to say that our teachers are professionals and our district people are professionals. And they will keep the ball rolling even if there isn't clear direction from the state about how big that ball is and where it's actually going. And in the meantime, we cannot be in suspended animation because we have 86-plus thousand kids in our schools who are expecting an education. So I think that we are now doing the best with what we have. And as elected constitutional officers, we do have the constitutional authority to say, wait a minute, state, what are we doing? Give us a clear, defined expectation so that we're not spinning wheels and going off track. So that we are providing our students with the skill sets and the information that they need to be college and career-ready. So thank you for doing the best you can with what you've got.
Anybody else with any questions, comments? I mean, uh, Ms. Dr. Graham?
I got nothing. It'll, it'll, you'll get what, you'll get the standards and the information you want.
Are you still happy that you took the job?
I'm thrilled. I am, every day. I am.
Thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Dr. Carlin? We've warmed him up. Come on down.
Accreditation, presentation. Good afternoon, Dr. Carlin.
Okay, I think we're all set. So good afternoon, board members. Dr. Graham, Mr. Martin. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today to talk with you about district accreditation. With me today presenting at the lectern are Dr. Bohatch and Dr. Ferguson. And we are here today to provide you with an update relative to district accreditation, which is rapidly approaching. Before we do begin our presentation, I just wanted to bring your attention to the handouts that were electronically submitted to you. You should have a handout relative to the five standards along with the indicators. There should also be a handout relative to standard one and standard two. So those will be discussed along with our, our presentation this afternoon. As pertains to accreditation, just a quick review. That accreditation really looks at how all of the pieces of our organization work together in tandem. Accreditation is also an opportunity for us to look at strengths and opportunities for improvement. And as you'll recall, the accreditation organization is Advanced Ed. So that is the organization that will be conducting our visit in March. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Advanced Ed does have some expectations for us. Basically, they're saying if you're having a visit for re-accreditation, which is what we're applying for. We originally achieved certification or accreditation in 2008. So now it's been five years and it's time to re-up on that accreditation. They're saying that you agree that you've met the standards, that you do have a continuous improvement process in your district, that you do follow, that we agreed to conduct an internal review. And we'll talk with you a little bit more about that, where we stand relative to our internal review in just a moment. The areas highlighted in green are what we're currently working on. And there's much to do as you can see, but we're on a good, a good trajectory. And then it also requires us to host an external review. There will be a team that will come to our district, as I said, from March. There will be a team that will come to our district, as I said, from March, March 2nd through 5th. March 2nd is a Sunday, so that's an easy day for us. They'll be coming into town. March 3rd will involve interviews here at the district office and folks to be interviewed include our district administrators, our superintendent, you as board members, and principals of schools that they will not visit and we'll talk with you a little bit more about that process as well. On March 4th, it's all about the schools. They will be in the schools, they send teams out to approximately 20 sites and they will visit classrooms, they will interview teams of parents, community members, staff members, that will all occur onsite and we will find out those locations of schools approximately two weeks before the visit. So we're really having everybody prepare like it's you and then we'll go ahead and let them know as soon as we know which schools will be visited. And then on March 5th, it's kind of the tie-up-the-loose-ends day. Any final questions they may have for staff, for all of us, questions that they may need to ask for of the board members, superintendent, et cetera. Late morning, they will schedule a meeting with Dr. Graham to give her a very high-level exit report, will not be totally in-depth, but they'll give her some of the initial findings, strengths and opportunities. And then later that afternoon, they've asked for a meeting with the board and so I'll work with Dr. Graham and our lead accreditor and all of you to schedule that date or that time as well, but that will be on March 5th. So it's my hope today that you'll circle those dates on your calendar, particularly March 3rd, 4th and 5th and just reserve the date for those, that visit. As we move forward, looking at accreditation, accreditation does focus on five standards as you recall from the earlier briefing this past spring. You'll see the wonderful team leads that have graciously agreed to lead the standards, so Dr. Bohatch and Dr. Ferguson, as well as Ms. Selken, Dr. Decimores and Dr. Itzen. I really want to recognize them and appreciate them for the work that they are doing, leading those standard teams. So as I was taking a look at our to-do list, we wanted to divide up for you, these are the items that have been completed as of today. We have provided accreditation training to our administrators, both district and school-based and we also have asked for schools to provide us with one team member, at least one team member, some schools have sent two, to come down to the district office and receive training around the standards. So most of that training has been completed at this time. We have also developed a SharePoint site at the district and the schools, the school facilitator is actually charged with not only receiving the training, but also going back to the schools and helping to gather evidence or what we call artifacts that can be uploaded to SharePoint. So we are sticking with our concept of being paperless and providing those on the SharePoint site. And then once they gather artifacts through conversation with their stakeholders back at the school, then they are working with their administrators to draft narratives and we'll talk a little bit more about that briefly as well. We have several next steps, but these are the immediate next steps that are on our to-do list. One right now that you're familiar with, I'm sure, is we have surveys for accreditation that are out and about for students, staff and parents and that survey was dispersed through the schools effective about the middle of September and we're providing about six or seven weeks for that survey to be completed. We are encouraging folks to complete that online, but we do have paper copies at each school if that should become necessary and we're hoping that everybody, no matter how they want to access that survey, we hope everybody does that. The paper survey is also available in Spanish and Creole, so those schools that need the translation, we certainly want to make that available. I did receive some training in Orlando and there was discussion about having those available online and Advanced Ed is working on having multiple languages online, but right now they're just not there yet. They do commit they'll have that by next year. Advanced Ed also does have some expectations about the stakeholder feedback surveys. They'd like to see at least 60% of our staff members complete a survey, approximately 40% of the students and 20% of the parents and those are minimum levels. We can certainly exceed that. Very happy to report to you today that we exceeded the level on staff, we're at 102% of our target, about 93% for our students, not quite there with our parents. We're about 50% of our target, so we've gotten about 10%. We are pulling out all the stops at this point. So anything that you can suggest to us, any opportunities you have when you're out speaking, we'll definitely make sure you get the link, but we really, really want to hear from a wide array of our parents. I will put a little asterisk next to that number and let you know that we have not counted up the parent surveys on paper. As you can imagine, that's a pretty awesome job and we will be working on that diligently, but as of right now, those are the numbers for the online surveys. On our immediate next steps to-do list, we also want to make sure that our district-level narratives are complete. So here's how this works. Right now, the schools have been working diligently to post the artifacts to the SharePoint site, then they are working closely with their administrators and stakeholders at the school and composing narratives. And then what our district leads, like the two gentlemen next to me are doing, is they are gathering all of that information off of our SharePoint and they are writing summaries based on common threads that they see at the schools. And so we'll talk with you a little bit more about that as they make their presentation. We are also wrapping up our standards training this week. We have training for principals at their meeting along with central leadership on Thursday for standard five and then we will have our school contacts here on Friday and they will receive training for the final standard on Friday. So that's really good news because then we know we have other things that we need to get them involved in. And then at that point, we'll be asking for them to collect that evidence, go back to their schools and involve their stakeholders for standard five. They'll post all of that information to SharePoint and then at that point, we're pretty much done with our schools in terms of what we need to have them submit. Then we need to go back and make sure that everybody's had the training, that everybody feels very confident and ready for the visit in March and we will be doing that together as a district leadership team. So today, our commitment, because we have limited time, we want to make sure that, as I mentioned before, you feel confident and comfortable with the standards. We want to respect your time as well and we know there's time for questions at the end. So what I've asked for Dr. Bohatch and Dr. Ferguson to do is to provide you with a handout and then actually get you involved in terms of the standard, the indicators, and then maybe some evidence that we can use as a district and this is based on what schools have submitted and some of our thinking as well as a district leadership team. So they're going to present that information to you so that you can see what the schools are submitting and then you may want to add to that list. There may be other things from your perspective you see that we do either as a board, as a district leadership team, or in the schools when you visit. So feel free to add that and give that information back to us because we want to include as much as possible in our narrative. Remember, we're trying to highlight our strengths and our opportunities for improvement. They're equally as important, we want to make sure that we identify both. So at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Bohatch and he's going to lead you through standard one, purpose and direction.
Okay.
Excuse me, just, I just want to be sure you all know that what they're talking about, the documents are at the end of your, of the PowerPoint, so they are there. Sorry, Pete.
All right, thank you. I'm the proud, repeating, proud team leader of standard one, purpose and direction. Basically, purpose and direction focuses on how we communicate our work, the systems work, to our stakeholders. So if you please refer to your handout, there are four indicators under standard one and to the right in the right column, which you have there are a list of evidence or artifacts related to those indicators. And like Dr. Carlin said, those artifacts were collected from school-based personnel and district personnel starting last spring. For example, if you take a look at standard or indicator, indicator one, basically, how do we communicate a system-wide purpose for student success? Some possible evidence would include survey results, the district webpage, our annual report. Shout out to Amity with all the upgrades to Parent Link, we can now produce electronic newsletters, there's a mobile app out there, parents are able to be notified via this new technology of any type of meetings. So like Dr. Carlin stated, feel free to add to that. I scribbled some of this stuff down this morning because stuff keeps coming to mind. So four indicators under standard one and Dr. Ferguson, you want to take us through two?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. I'm proud to lead standard two team, which is governance and leadership. And again, the indicators for schools mirror those of the system. So our focus is going to be looking at your work as a board from a systematic standpoint. So standard two, system operates under governance and leadership that promotes and supports student performance and system effectiveness. And under this standard, there are six indicators that will be collecting evidence and in your handout, you'll see the indicator on the left and you'll see some possible evidence points that kind of focus on a systems approach. So indicator 2.1, the governing board establishes policies and supports practices that ensure effective communication of the system and its schools. And you see some possible evidence points there in the policies and procedures that as a board you've put into place. Again, if you think of other things that you know of that we should, that we can include, that would be great. 2.2 indicator, the governing body operates responsibly and functions effectively. And again, you'll see some things related to your role as board members. 2.3, the governing body ensures that the leadership at all levels has the autonomy to meet, to meet goals for achievement and instruction and to manage the day-to-day operations effectively. 2.4 looks at leadership and staff at all levels of the system foster a culture consistent with the system's purpose and direction and that will be a direct alignment to the indicators for standard one. 2.5 looks at leadership engages stakeholders effectively in support of the system's purpose and direction and that has a lot to do with our communication, both with inside the organization and outside of the organization and how we move that vision and direction forward. And standard 2.6, or the indicator for 2.6 is leadership and staff supervision and evaluation processes result in improved professional practice in all areas of the system and improve student success. And again, many of the indicators around this have to do with our new appraisal systems for both our teachers and our administrators as a part of that, a lot of the work that's happened over the last several years with the new requirements for evaluation systems. So I'm happy to address any questions that you might have, but again, these are just some examples of evidence points that we would include both in our documentation and as a part of the narrative that we're developing.
And so our next steps involve providing you with a briefing relative to standards three, four and five and we do want to spend a significant amount of time, especially on three. Three has to do with teaching and learning, four has to do with our resources, which we talked a little bit about earlier today, and standard five has everything to do with results and that's very important as well. I do want to add a couple of things that we did not speak about earlier. Number one, that we do have a timeline, it's a rather aggressive timeline, I will admit, but it is a timeline nonetheless and our goal is to have all of the school submissions on SharePoint to us by about the middle of November and that might seem early because they're not visiting until March, but the creditors have asked to have all of the information from our district by February 1st. So with the holidays coming, there's a fair amount of work still to be done and the other piece is we want to make sure that we have opportunity to go into the district. Once we have completed the district narratives, there's also an executive summary that needs to be completed. We want to make sure that you receive a copy of it and as you go on to the community, you know, we want you to be able to elicit feedback. We do have a number of organizations we'd like to go see. I did have the opportunity to visit with our CSI Advisory Council the other night. There will be a fair amount of other organizations that I would like to go to along with our standard leads. So we want to get out in the community because once we have written the narratives, how do we do? Do we accurately reflect where we stand at this point in time in the district? And so that's our opportunity as a school district to elicit any additional information and then all of that has to be sent up to Advanced Ed by February 1st. So while that sounds like a long time away, it really isn't, especially with the holidays coming up, people get very busy. So at this time, we will entertain any questions that you may have or any additional information you would like to require.
Ms. Dozier?
Thank you. Thank you. It is very important as we approach this and I realize that the timeline is very, very quick coming upon us. One of the things that I think would be beneficial for all the board members would be for us to have, when we have our discussions with the team that comes down for us to be re-accredited, they have a series of questions that they go through with us. Now, is that the handout that you're going to provide us? Is that what your, is that what your plan is?
We would be pleased to provide that to you, yes, absolutely.
And it might, some of us are actually evaluators and we know exactly what it, you know, what the process is and all of that. I think that it might even be good for, some of us may want to have individual dialogues with you, which because, and I will just say this, boards in the past have created a situation to where the district was cited for something because the board had a lack of knowledge. So it's very important that as we have our conversations with these individuals, we have an understanding and we know what we're talking about. And I'm putting that out there because I know every board member wants to be very comfortable as we have these conversations and I think that that is very important. Just when you said that there's going to be a handout, looking over these, I jotted down several things that I think, so you're going, you want us to give those back to you, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if you would, or deliver them to Dr. Graham and she'll share those with us, whatever your pleasure is, we're happy to have that.
Very good. In fact, one of them, we've had a big conversation around today that's not on here. Program study? I got it, I got it, I got it. Couldn't resist that, just had to throw that in there. It's kind of the elephant in the room today.
Colleagues, anybody else, any questions or comments at this moment?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your time. I look forward to seeing the rest of this.
Our pleasure.
Well, next we have one other surprise.
Yeah, well, and thank you for letting us flip the agenda a little bit. Mr. Ford had to come in from somewhere north, so he has to have a little extra time. Amy's going to introduce our guest, who many of you know. I think all of you know.
Thank you all so much for hearing us today on our debt refinancing opportunity. Mr. Ford is here today to talk to us. You all know Mr. Ford through Ford and Associates. They've been our financial advisor for many years and we are very grateful for all the things that they do to help us save a lot of money within our debt area. So Mr. Ford is here today to talk about the opportunity that is now in front of us.
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Jerry Ford with Ford and Associates, the district's financial advisor. We have been down this road before. As you know, we follow on a regular basis all of your outstanding debt and monitor that debt in relation to current interest rates to determine whether or not and at which times it may be feasible to refinance the debt. Couple of key rules that you've provided in the past and that is that when we consider refinancing debt, we do not consider extending the term of the debt. The new debt has to equal or be less than the term of the old debt. There has to be savings. Those savings must meet or exceed 3% on a present value basis, net of all cost, of the amount of the bonds that we are going to refinance. And in following that, we also get a lot of unsolicited proposals from banks and from underwriters who are trying to check in and make sure that, you know, they're following them and we certainly have on this probably a half a dozen underwriters and three banks over time over the last year as we've been tracking this and we believe that now is an appropriate time, given the increase in uncertainty on the rates, to go ahead and refinance a portion of your outstanding debt. Specifically, what we're suggesting to you is that there are $24,755,000 in bonds coming due in your 2004 A Series Certificates of Participation and your 2004 C Series Certificates of Participation that if we were to refinance them at today's rates, would exceed your present value savings targets and would generate present value savings in excess of $1 million for the school district. We believe that this is an appropriate time to consider that and if you ask us to do so, or if that was your inclination to consider that at your next board meeting, we would go out and we would take bids from banks. That is somewhat different than the way that we have done many of your issues, which is to draft an offering statement, to go out into the public markets and sell those bonds via underwriters in the public markets. Because the maturities on this particular debt are so short and because of the size of the debt, it fits very well into the range in which banks are bidding aggressively on at present and we feel that your savings would be greater, your overall cost lower if we were to bid this directly with banks rather than going to the public markets. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Colleagues, any questions, comments?
I just have a comment. In the past, I think that we've always gotten good, sound financial advice with Mr. Ford and his company and I can't see why we wouldn't move forward with this as well because the... the advice that you have given us in the past has created substantial savings for the district, so I can certainly be one that supports this.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. I'll echo her comments as well.
Thank you very much, sir.
Dr. Moore, we're bringing this on the fifth, okay.
Thank you so much, Dr. Graham, for bringing this to us. Let's move this right along. Next would be public comment. Mr. Martin.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes.
Do we have anybody on the right? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the left willing to speak? No public comment today. Board members, good of the order. Ms. Fisher.
Okay, thank you. On Friday, October 18th, I asked Susan to send an email to you all regarding our reorganization planning session. We need to schedule that. Available dates at the Foundation Building are Monday, October 28th, Monday, November 4th, or Monday, November 18th, Tuesday, November 5th, which is a board meeting day only in the morning, Wednesday, October 30th, and Wednesday, November 13th, Thursday, November 7th, and Thursday, November 14th, and then the 1st and the 8th of November also, which fall on a Friday. Last year, we did meet on Wednesday, November 7th, the day after the election, from 9:00 to 12:00, and then we had regular board meetings following in the afternoon. So if you have your phones or calendars with you, we might want to enter some discussion and go ahead and reserve the Foundation Building for that activity, in the event that you still want to do it at the Foundation Building. Board members, any ideas, discussions, or suggestions?
And last year, we did, we made it a day affair. We basically met in the morning, and then we went to a board meeting afterwards.
Yes, that's correct.
And that would be on the 12th, right?
The 5th.
Oh, on the 5th, okay, sorry about that. Well, I think that either one of those dates, the 5th or the 7th, but I think that Mr. Scott has indicated that it would be easier for him if we would do it on the same day. Is that correct, Mr. Scott?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to remark that I was going to propose that we make it a full day and have our reorganization planning in the morning, and then work on some team building and accreditation preparation in the afternoon, if that would be possible. So I just wanted to throw that out there for consideration.
And I would support that.
Mr. Scott, is the 7th totally out for you?
No, not necessarily. 11:30 to 1 o'clock is.
Okay, okay.
And the other dates were the 18th?
18th, the 13th.
And the 18th is kind of...
It's a Monday.
Yeah.
And it might be a little late, because it's just the day before the board meeting?
Right. And then we've got, I guess, the 28th, if we're looking at an all-day meeting?
Well, there would be Wednesday, October 30th, Thursday, November 7th.
Yes, Mrs. Morgan. I have had comments to the effect that the Foundation, there's no filming of the meetings, so that the public can't view them. And we did work successfully, we did do one workshop right here, so I don't...
On the floor?
Yeah. So I don't, you know, if it's more convenient for people to do it all day, maybe we shouldn't be limiting ourselves to the Foundation. That's the only comment on me.
Okay, okay, and that's a good suggestion, and that did work very well when we had that here. I know it's audio, is it audiotaped at the Foundation?
It can be, it can be at the Foundation.
At the Foundation?
It can be at the Foundation.
Yes, yeah, but it's not videotaped there, okay.
But it can be audiotaped. You know, somebody has asked me a couple of times, what's the difference in a workshop and a briefing? Well, a briefing, we're sitting here at the table, cameras, lights, action, and we are not as apt to roll up our sleeves and really get work done. And it sounds like this is going to be an all-day session. I don't think the appropriateness would be here at the board table. If we have an audio of the meeting, I think that that is sufficient, and that should be sufficient for anyone, because that will be publicized in advance, anybody who wants to be there. And we often have some very nice people that come and they sit, and sometimes we even call on them to ask them questions as they sit there and watch all of the dialogue that we have. And I personally, when we have a topic to where we're trying to really get our arms around what we're doing, and the purpose of the reorganization meeting is to discuss what our needs are for the upcoming year, coming up with a calendar, discussing how we see ourselves moving forward as a board, I think, I just think that that would be more appropriate if we did it away from the table, and at a, where we can all just basically have a relaxed setting, because I think it's more formal here, and, you know, we tend to have our formal behavior going on.
Agreed.
Concur.
Okay.
Could you please give me the dates again one more time?
Certainly. Monday, October 28th, November 4th, November 18th, Tuesday, November 5th, morning only, Wednesday, October 30th and November 13th, Thursday, November 7th and November 14th, and then Friday, November 1st and November 8th.
One other consideration, Mr. Martin just reminded me, any date next week would be a challenge because advertisement's going to be required.
Right, so we need to...
So we'll take away the 28th and 30th of October.
Yeah, it's not the location, it's the timing.
Would November 1st not be?
That should be enough.
That should be, yeah, okay.
Did you say, I didn't hear you say November 1st.
Friday, November 1st and November 8th. And then it would be Monday, November 4th or 18th, Tuesday, the 5th, Wednesday, the 13th, or Thursday, the 7th or the 14th?
Well, I would certainly entertain or enjoy us looking at the 4th of November.
Okay.
And the 13th of November, or an all-day meeting, because we wouldn't have any other me, or I don't have any other meetings scheduled for those days.
The 4th and the 13th?
Well, or, either or.
Either or.
13th is better for me.
Okay.
That works for me.
Okay, I could do that.
Mr. Scott?
Just clicking days off here. Fourth or 13th is fine with me, November.
All right, Mr. Scott, are you okay on the 13th?
Yep.
Mr. Armstrong, are you okay on the 13th?
I'm fine with the 13th.
Okay, so I think then we have a consensus that the 13th and Dr. Graham, are you okay with that?
I will be.
Okay, so then we'll go to the Foundation on the 13th, and we'll make a full day of it?
When you say all day, starting like at 9:00?
Let's, okay, are you proposing that?
Don't get too early.
I mean, I'm trying to look out for these people that have to drive a long way. It's going to be season, and she's got a long way. Well, I'm talking about, she's got to come all the way from Benita Springs.
Why do I got a strange feeling, there's something behind your comment?
Well, I'm just looking out for everybody else here, and Miss Morgan, I mean, has to drive from Benita Springs, and there's a lot of traffic on all of those roads.
I come from Southwest Cape.
While I was getting, say, Miss Fisher has to drive all the way from the Cape, and we know those bridges are absolutely crowded, so...
Getting to the bridge is the problem.
Yeah, in the morning, we're just going to add additional traffic on the road for all those poor buses.
Allowing for travel time, then, are you suggesting that we begin at 9:00 and perhaps end at 3:00?
Oh, absolutely.
And take a little break in the middle?
You notice, Mr. Scott, nobody's talked to us about this, right, the time wise?
Mr. Scott, how is 9:00 AM for you?
And he's got a long way, too, he comes all the way from Alva.
And he's got to feed the horses and the dogs.
Yeah, the pigs and the cows and everything else.
Does anybody remember? I mean, I have just as far to drive, I got to go drive all over, all the way over the bridge.
That's right.
And Mr. Armstrong, can you make it by 9:00?
I don't know. If I start walking by 45, maybe.
I'll pick you up, that's okay.
Do you have to plow ahead of time?
Okay, so November 13th, and we'll start at 9:00 and conclude at 3:00. And then, Dr. Graham, did you say that you might give us a small presentation on four agreements to help us with our team building? Is that okay with everybody?
Is that all you have for the good of the order?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozier?
Thank you. We recently, it takes me a little longer to get these things on my calendar, so just bear with me for one second, if you could go to somebody else.
Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Ms. Dozier, back to you, that was quick.
I didn't expect it to be so quick. Well, you said 3:00 PM, okay, got it done, all right, there we go.
9 to 3.
All right. I do have a couple of things. I had a question for Mr. Martin around the referendum that's going to be on the ballot in November, if we could have a conversation around, if we develop any language for that? I know on our legislative delegation, I think, agreed to allow us to have some, have we worked on any language? Because...
The language for the local bill, Mr. Shara has shared with me.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, so we actually have...
We do have that language at this point. Actually, we're still in the process of working on potential revisions to the language. I've had some correspondence with him in the last few days about that.
Okay, I just didn't want it to slip under the, and us forget about itself.
No, ma'am, he is forwarding that effort, and he's working with me on that.
All right, thank you. The next thing, board members, I know that we all recently participated in the evaluation for Dr. Graham, and I was, in fact, she and I had a conversation the very next day that everything came out. In fact, I think I was the first board member that actually turned in all of my evaluations of her after we had a rather lengthy conversation on the telephone about the goals. But I was a little taken back that we did not use the performance instrument that we always use. You know, we don't just set goals for our teachers, but instead, our teachers, our administrators, and everyone have performance, besides their goals, they have a performance instrument that they are graded on, in other words, or that they are evaluated on. Teachers are evaluated on how they manage classroom conduct, how they manage paperwork in the classroom. There is a document that we have used, and it was a document that basically came out of quality, out of the Sterling and Maldridge quality, and it has certain categories, and those categories are daily performance, day-to-day performance of the job, information analysis, strategic planning, customer focus, human resources, process management, operational results. And without an instrument like this and just simply goals and nothing else, there's no way for us to communicate with the superintendent on how well she's doing. And personally, it would have been, I would have loved to have had this instrument to be able to really make her shine, as I think that she has done during the last, how many months, three months that you've been here?
Four months on Saturday.
Four months, okay, four months on Saturday. And it didn't give me an opportunity to do that, and the goals are so goal-specific that it really didn't give you an opportunity to talk about, in other words, how, for instance, how well she did at selecting her team and putting her organizational chart together. All of these things are things that are in this, and I would certainly, it was an assumption that I made at this table, that this would be part of the goals, because in the past, we've always used this document, and then the goals are at the end. So I would ask that we again use this document to evaluate the superintendent. It's our way of officially and formally communicating with her or him, and it's a her, and basically telling her how well she's doing at developing and monitoring the district's strategic plan, how well she's doing at analyzing and using data for making decisions. So I would ask that, you know, if we need a policy to say that this is what we'll do, then so be it. But somehow this got, this was something that we didn't do, so that's why I'm bringing that here at the table for your discussion today. And maybe, I think, in January, is that the next observation of the superintendent?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Three months, I believe, is January.
And since that would be, that would give her at least six months being here, which usually, we do this evaluation on a six-month period anyway. We've done it twice a year, so that would be, it would make it the right time for us to be able to use this document with the superintendent in January. So I would just put that out there, that we again establish the use of this document, and if we need to put it in policy, so that when we have a change in the guard, hopefully we won't have a change in the guard for a very long time, it's not something that will be, because Dr. Graham didn't even know about the document, to her defense.
Anything else, Ms. Dozier?
No, that's it, I'd just like your, y'all's input on it.
Mr. Scott, any input on this at this time?
I don't have any.
Ms. Fisher?
I would agree to using it at the six-month evaluation.
As would I.
The 6th and the 12th.
Six and the 12th.
I am not convinced on it one way or the other this time. I understand your purpose and the idea behind it, and I value it tremendously, but I still would like to hold my opinion on that just at this moment.
Well, I think we have direction, because three of us have agreed, if we need to vote on it, Mr. Martin, do we need to vote on it?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Okay, could you prepare a document to bring for us to vote on?
I can prepare an agenda for that purpose, if that's the board's desire, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Any more comment? Dr. Graham, do you have anything?
Is that in addition to the document I gave you?
Yes. Want to see it?
I think I, somebody sent it, I haven't looked at it, just curious.
I think I asked them to send it to you also.
Yeah, I just have another comment. I think that we certainly hope that we don't have a changing of the guard for a very long time, but maybe the board and the attorney and the superintendent's office could have some sort of a checklist that we could provide for someone new coming in, so that there'd be an understanding about, you know, which documents have been used, and of course, there's always an opportunity for change, but maybe that would be helpful. And then I think that our board secretaries have a really good working knowledge of a lot of the formalities and the processes, so maybe, you know, we could have them offer that, those suggestions, especially since, in this case, we have a superintendent with, also with a newer secretary, so...
Then we have a newer one in our office as well, so...
Right, right, yes, we do. She's smiling, so that's a good sign.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
Next is board attorney and superintendent's comments. Mr. Martin?
Nothing, sir, thank you. Nothing, sir, thank you.
Dr. Graham? Seeing no other business at order? Our next meeting is tonight at 6:00. Thank you very much.